You've accomplished your mission. Okay, David, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good morning to everybody and welcome. We will call to order a regular meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners today being Tuesday, March 25 of 2025. A few housekeeping items we do want to note that the meeting is being livestreamed and also being recorded. And as we always do, we would ask if you have your cellphone, if you'd please put it on vibrator silence. We would appreciate you doing that. We always begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and then we would ask, remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Kennedy, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one visible with liberty and justice.
Silence. Thank you all. Vanessa, could you call?
Commissioner Sinado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bogler?
Here. We have a forum, all three commissioners being present. I'll note that as we do at every meeting, we'll have two opportunities for public comment. You are, we'll have one very shortly and then one prior to a term. If you do have a comment, we ask that it be related to county government matters and we would welcome your comments both times you'd like. If you only want to speak once, that's fine. If you're just here to listen, that's also fine. And if you could try to limit your comments to about five minutes or so, we'd appreciate that. Next on the agenda, we always set aside time for row officer reports if they wish to attend. They're not obligated to be here, but this morning I don't see any of our elected row officers. So that takes us to public comment. I will open the floor to see if anybody has a comment this time. Looks like we don't. So we'll repeat this before we adjourn. Moving on to fiscal and contractual, we do have one bid out of our tax claim office for a repository property. What number does this one get, Vanessa?
Fifty-five.
Five-five. Thank you. This resolution involves a bid that was placed on a parcel located at 718 Carlisle Avenue in the city of Newcastle, parcel number 02073200. Angela McKnight placed a bid of $550 on this parcel. This bid was accepted by Newcastle City Council on February 28. And it appears that we did not hear back from the Newcastle area school district. So it now comes to us and if we approve it, that will then allow Ms. McKnight to move forward with her bid. I'll open it up, see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, Dan, anything? Would one of you wish to make a motion for resolution 55?
The resolution says five fifty.
Yes, it does. I hate to put Mr. Burek on the spot. You may have heard Mr. Kennedy just note, the document we received from you, I think we ought to go with, says 500.
That was, I'm sorry, that was just kind of the resolution.
Okay, so the resolution should say 500? Thank you. Dan, thanks for catching that. So we'll note on the resolution that it's 500, which is what is noted on the document we receive for tax claims. Thanks again, Dan. Now that we know the exact precise amount, could I have a motion for resolution 55?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you. Gentlemen, any concerns? If not, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Next, we have warrant registers that have been provided to us by the county comptroller's office. And they're also known as check reconciliation registers. They are dated March 10, 11, and 12 of this year. I'll give my colleagues the time they need to look them over. And whenever you're ready, gentlemen, I could take a motion to accept these documents. I make a motion to accept. I'll second. Thank you both. I should note that you think, you know, why they moved so quickly, obviously, we've all three had an opportunity to look at them, so. We have a motion, a second. Either of you have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, then we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Minutes of the March 11 meeting. We'll note that last week, my two fellow commissioners were attending the state county commissioners conference in Dauphin County. So accordingly, we did not have a commissioners meeting last Tuesday. So the minutes date back to March 11. Again, gentlemen, take whatever time you need, look them over. If you're ready, though, I could accept a motion for us to adopt the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Thank you both. Are there any questions or concerns about minutes? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Next, we have a core of written communications that have come in. We have three to enter into the record. The first is from a company known as Apex Engineering Surveying Environmental Services Company based out of Greensboro. And this involves their client, AmeriCole Aggregates at the, and I hope I pronounced this right, Mosca Pan Quarry, based in Shenango Township. Notes here that AmeriCole is providing notice that they are submitting an application to the DEP for a GP 11, a general operating permit for a portable non-road engine located at AmeriCole's Mosca Pan Quarry site at 2645 Savannah Road in Shenango Township. It's signed by Alicia Schaefer, project manager for Apex Companies. Second letter is also from Apex, also signed by Ms. Schaefer. This involves the, again, the client is AmeriCole Aggregates. It's the Welsh plant located in Wayne Township. And it notes here that AmeriCole is providing notice that they are submitting an application to the DEP for a GP 3 and a GP 11 operating permits for the portable facility located at AmeriCole's Welsh plant site at 1508 Jockey Moore Road in Wayne Township. The site is currently operating under approved state-only operating permit, but AmeriCole would like to bring in a different array of processing equipment. And the third and final piece of correspondence that we have received comes from the Sisters of Humility, Villa Maria, that we would commonly refer to it as, in Pulaski Township at their community center. And they are writing to inform us that they intend to submit a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit application to the Department of Environmental Protection. This is actually a reissuance of a permit that's in place. And it's signed by Warren Chapella. Those are the three letters we've received. Dan, any concerns? Thank you, Chris. Any, would one of you care to make a motion for us to accept these letters? I vote we accept the letters. I'll second. Thank you both. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're down to commissioner reports and comments. A couple of things on my part. Just note again that and maybe they'll report on it, both Commissioner Sanada and Commissioner Kennedy did attend the spring conference of the County Commissioners Association meeting. I had been called for jury duty, so I stayed home. Turned out, I never had to go upstairs. Apparently, they didn't need any jurors last week, but we had put it safe. So hopefully, my colleagues will talk a little bit about the conference. And then just very briefly, and again, maybe Dan and Chris would want to elaborate on it. We all three had the pleasure of attending two ribbon-cutting ceremonies last week. One was in Shenango Township. That was Weber Catering out on US Route 422. They've opened a second facility. They currently are based up in Wilmington Township, but they've expanded their operations into Shenango Township. Nice ceremony there. And then on Saturday, the three of us attended the grand opening of Michael's Store in Union Township. Once again, it's good to see ongoing business expansion in our county. Final thing I'll note is that, well, actually, just looking ahead, we have another ribbon-cutting this coming Thursday in the borough of New Wilmington. Greenville Savings Bank is opening a new branch office in the borough, and we've been invited to attend that function. One other thing I'll note is that next Tuesday, our meeting of the Board of Commissioners will begin at 9:00 a.m. instead of 10:00 a.m. And there will be a legal ad to that effect at some point. But the members of the county retirement board have been invited to attend a meeting in Pittsburgh by our financial advisors, Marquette Associates, and that begins at noon. So we didn't want to rush our commissioners meetings, we pushed it back an hour. That's all I have today. And Mr. Kennedy, you're next.
I'll be real quick. Yeah, we did have the ribbon-cutting and I got to meet with quite a few state legislators down in Harrisburg when we were there, so we had a good good couple of days, get things done, talk about what's going on in Lawrence County. That's about it.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
I'll just, I'll follow up. I thought we had the conference last week. You were Ms. Chairman Bogler. I've been going for many years. You're not there any longer, so we did explain about you two.
I'll be relieved.
But it was a good conference. We got a chance, I got a chance to see some of my former colleagues down there as well as officials within the state. You know, same issues that I think we discussed when I was in Washington DC with the NACO were discussed at C cap, you know, our concerns about potential cuts and how effects it could have on the county. And I think we're trying to be prepared from that perspective. So it does give us some insight, you know, of what's happening throughout the state. You know, we just want to be prepared. And I thought that it went well. So I mean, Commissioner Kennedy, we attended many sessions and we had to split up because I wanted to summit and Dan went others. So we're trying to cover the whole panel. Just to follow up on Chairman Bogler and Commissioner Kennedy's comments, the facility on Shenango, Weber Catering, a beautiful new facility. I think they're going to do quite well out there. It can hold anywhere from 100 to 200 people from graduations, dress rehearsals, things like that. So I think it's something that's needed in the community. Their food's really good. I've had that for years. And the Michaels, I've been getting, that went very well on Saturday. People are excited about that. You know, that's coming back to life out there. I think there's going to be another opening here shortly, next door, I think five below. And I know they're still trying to market the other two spaces they have available in that old Sears building. I was there when it opened 30 years ago. Sears, and we had hills. Those who remember hills. So to see that building coming back to life, you don't want to see it empty. I think it's almost filled now, except for that building. And I think, and there's Mr. McClure, I do want to shout out the McClure family. They are dedicated to the county. The son come up from Florida, the dad is in his 90s and still going strong and promoting the county. That says a lot for the McClure family. So we do appreciate their efforts. Things don't just happen. A lot of the officials, they can't do a whole lot unless you have business people out there carrying the wire. And the McClures have done that. So that's pretty all that much I have, and I look forward to our next ribbon-cutting this week. But I think what we're noticing this year, we're starting to see things happen throughout the whole county, whether even the city of Newcastle and Shenango, Union, that were one, Wilmington. I know there's some things happening in Elwood City. So I think we're starting to see a lot of that. We want to continue on that path. There are small things, but you know, what it all adds up. So that's all I have.
Gentlemen, thank you both. We have some new business items to talk about this morning, and the first falls under the heading of our conservation district. Freddie Smith is with us. Freddie, would you mind coming up to the microphone, please, and have a seat and make yourself comfortable? I don't think this is going to take very long, but we appreciate, Freddie's on the staff of the county conservation district. Once a year, we submit an application to the Department of Environmental Protection for funding for the West Nile Surveillance Program. Each year, we have to enter into a contract with an individual who will conduct mosquito surveillance throughout the county. And this proposed resolution, number 56, notes that the cost of this agreement or this contract would not exceed $30,000. The gentleman who will be undertaking this work, Mr. Dennis Stitch, who has done it before, will reimburse him. This says 67 cents a mile. I thought the IRS rate went up to 7. Not. Maybe, I'm not sure who gave us the 67 cents. Did that come from?
This resolution came from, or the contract came from Conservation.
Conservation.
They have to clarify PDP about the mileage rates. They're approving this time. I would imagine the IRS is only 7 as well. They just issued 67.
Could, could we, and I'm glad the solicitor just walked in. We have a proposal that lists the, this is from the West Nile Surveillance in the Conservation District. We're going to work with them to contract with the gentleman, as we do every year. And the reimbursement rate for mileage on the resolution is listed at 67 cents. We're talking about the fact that the IRS rate has gone up to 70 cents. So that Freddie doesn't have to come back, I'm wondering, could we amend this to simply say mileage reimbursement will be at the DEP established rate, since the funding comes from DEP?
Yeah, I'm not sure that the DEP establishes a mileage rate, though I think everyone uses the IRS rate.
Should we say the IRS rate?
Yeah, I would just say the current standing IRS rate.
Dan and Chris, are you agreeable in Freddie's?
That shouldn't be a problem because we're well within our budget in terms of the mileage of the located for individuals here.
Okay.
That should be fine.
So the language, if you, gentlemen, don't object, based on the solicitor's recommendation is that we'll say that the Mr. Stitch shall be reimbursed mileage at the current standing IRS rate? And again, Dan and Chris, you're both okay with that? Freddie, that's, you're comfortable with that?
The numbers I have, that should not be a problem.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Now Freddie, do you have more to add about this?
Only that, the only large change between the budget from last year and budget for this year is an increase in the technician's reimbursement. So he's gone from, it's a significant increase from $20 an hour to $30 an hour. Part of that was, two reasons. Because Mr. Stitch has been doing this for so long, we've asked him to prepare some SOPs for how he does it in the county. So last year, we had an unusually high amount of positive activity across the state for West Nile virus. So the southwest region used our cat face and treatment operating procedure as their model for how the other counties in the southwest should go about controlling larval mosquitoes. So kind of reflecting on Dan's experience, we're kind of asking him to prepare some more SOPs for how to operate the program in the future. And given he's been doing this for so long, DEP kind of reminded that maybe, you know, a rate increase would be more important. So that is the only major change. Everything else is just restocking of the control inventory.
And correct if I'm wrong, the funding for the dollars that go towards his position, they come from DEP.
It's 100% grant funded, so there's no cost to the county.
No cost to the county and no cost to conservation district. Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions for Freddie? Mr. Sanada? All right. Freddie, we appreciate your bringing this to our attention. May I have a motion for resolution 56?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns or questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we'll note again, the motion carries with the adjustment to the language regarding the mileage reimbursement. Here to the IRS rate as noted. Freddie, you have anything else for us?
I don't, thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Sure.
Have a great day.
You too.
Resolution 57. We've noted at a couple of our meetings, both commissioner meetings and I think our most recent salary board meeting. We're in very short time here, going to see a change in our assessment office. The gentleman at the table is, of course, JR Hardester, our chief assessor, who's held that position for over 20 years.
That position about 18, 2005.
Oh, excuse me. That's right. Because Mary, that's right. Mary, when I came on, Mary was here and then she retired, so. JR, as we've noted, is moving on to the private sector. It's bittersweet. It is for us, probably for you too. We hate to see you go, but we're happy for you in terms of your career. And I'm sure I speak for my colleagues in expressing our sincere thanks for all of your hard work and your professionalism all these years. It's been a real pleasure to work with you. What we're doing this morning, actually, JR has a couple of other items that we have to talk about. And I think that's one reason our solicitor's here. But the first immediate thing we need to do in terms of hiring Mr. Hardester's replacement. This resolution 57 would appoint Bruce Peterson to serve as the chief assessor for Lawrence County. The date on here is effective today. That's what I thought. When I saw this, I thought, because that's your last
My last day.
Last day. So please, gentlemen, we'll scratch March 25 and we'll put April 4. I do want to note that when we hired department heads who report directly to the three of us, most of the time, we go through a fairly significant interview process, advertising process, resume review process, interview process. Mr. Burek, you know what I'm talking about. Both a hat you wore. This is a unique position in that the Commonwealth requires that the chief assessor have certain certifications. And it's referred to as
CP certified Pennsylvania evaluator.
Okay. Most of us in the room don't have that. Gentleman sitting right there does, and the gentleman we're about to vote on also has it. It's a requirement. And one of the things that I think speaks well for JR's leadership is that actually, all of your employees in your office as we speak have that certification. Am I correct?
Yes, except for the one we just hired, the new mapper, Tom.
Oh, okay. That's right, because he falls under both. That's right. Thanks for noting that. But everybody else who's been there has this certification, which again speaks for both your professionalism and their professionalism. So this resolution number 57 would hire and appoint Mr. Peterson. He would have been with us today. He had a commitment outside of the office that he could change, so we certainly understand that. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, JR, do you have anything you'd like to know?
I just to know a little bit about Bruce's background. As you mentioned, he does have a CP license as required by law. But Bruce has also licensed revolved around real estate. He is a broker of Enel Blue Real Estate. He owns that real estate firm. He's been a residential appraiser for almost over 20 years. So to say he is not qualified would be unjust. So he is well more than qualified this and probably more. So you could not have picked a better candidate. Happy that Bruce will be able to fill my shoes well bigger than what I am currently wearing. So you guys have done a great job in picking the successor. He will lead us into a bright future.
Well, you played a major role in bringing him along through the years. I know you two have worked well together. Just a real quick personal story about Bruce. He, just like you, he's been to all corners of the county in his career. And he made an observation once, and I've never forgotten this, it just still makes me chuckle. He said that when he's in Plain Grove Township, he thinks he's in Nebraska, because it's very flat, a lot of farmland up there. He says when he goes down to Perry Township, he thinks he's in West Virginia, because it's a lot of hills and valleys and and those two townships aren't all that far apart. Shows the differences in our topography in the county. Well, listen, I've talked more than enough. Mr. Kennedy, I'll turn it over to you.
No, I don't, no. Just thank you for your service, Joe.
Thanks, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
I'll just, JR, thank you. We appreciate your efforts over the years and very pleased with Bruce. I'm just going to be able to deal with him for the past year. Plus, we're very fortunate, you know, we're moving Bruce right up. He's more than qualified from that perspective. A lot of times, I had an opportunity to thank you for your efforts and getting Bruce where he needs to be because we're a little happy with him. I appreciate your kind words. I always try to live by one thing, you know, when you work, you never want to have a, what do you call it? Can't think of the word right now, but a similar kind of failure. So if anything were to ever happen to one employee in the office, someone could step right in and that position or the office will obviously be, so I pride myself and make it for everyone in the office. Was able to do the roles, all except for, I guess, for myself a little bit. No one wanted to learn. The chief assessor role to a full extent, because I don't think they wanted me to leave, but they will be fine with Bruce. And he has been training the last couple of weeks fairly well, so I have no doubt he will step right in without a fee. So I do also want to comment to the three of you in previous boards, as I have done in the past. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of all the state organizations. Because of that, it's grown, made me grow as a person. Unfortunately, it's probably one of the reasons why I am now leaving, because I've been dedicated so well. But you guys have pushed us, and not just me, but many of the other county employees, to get involved and make Lawrence County proud. Hope I did that over my last 25 years and it was great serving all current board and previous boards of the mission. So again, I thank you.
And speaking of previous commissioners, former Commissioner Burek is with us. Of course, he's our tax claim director, but Brian, would you care to make any comments?
I was reminded, JR, that I was on the board that first hired him as a contractor, and he did such a good job that eventually we hired him permanently. So whenever things, he'd have a rough day at work, he'd say, ah, it's all your fault. I work for the county. But he, I knew then, he was a bright young man, and as he said, his intelligence and leadership skills propelled him to serve as statewide president of the Assessors Association. And he shares his knowledge at many conferences and just want to congratulate him on his new position and wish him well. My office works very closely with his office, but we work very well with Bruce as well, and I think that's a great, great selection to continue on the work of the assessment office.
Brian, thank you. Counselor, you've worked closely with JR. Would you care to make any comments?
I'm coming anywhere. I don't need to comment.
That's true. You're not moving physically. Your family will be here in Mahoning Township and Lawrence County, so.
Yes, for sure.
For now.
Okay. Amy, you've worked very closely with JR. Would you care to make any comments?
No, I'm sad. Me and JR, Jared and I started at the same time, and our offices have worked very, very closely together. We share two employees now between Alan and Tom, and we both help each other a lot in our professional manner. He's become a very good friend of mine and attended my son's graduation party, so he'll be missed for sure, but like Jason said, he's not going anywhere. He's still, he's still in the county and we'll still speak tabs on him.
Amy, thank you. Mr. Vanasco?
Thank you very much for everything, JR. I think from a standpoint, sometimes my position can become, can't become a complaint department. But the professional way that you handled your office through the years that I've been in contact with you, it was never that way with your office. It's just been run in a professional nature and done the right way, so I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. And I'm sure I speak for everybody simply saying thank you, thank you, and we wish you continued success. You've had a lot of success and we know you're going to have more. This is resolution 57 that will appoint Bruce Peterson as the chief assessor effective April 4, 2025. Could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any final concerns or comments? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rovler?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Thank you, Vanessa. Now JR, I think you're going to stick around, and we have Solicitor Madore here as well on these next two. These are potential settlement agreements on some tax appeals that have taken place. Who's going to take the lead on this? Or you can tag team, however you vote, however you want to do it.
It won't take long. There's a couple of tax assessment appeals going on right now. One with property owned by Lightner Green, which is, people would recognize it as the apartment complexes in front of the Y zone on Mitchell Road in the Shannick. And the other being the Old Elwood City Hospital. Both filed tax assessment appeals. They are now in the court of common pleas, and we need to get appraisals to bolster our argument regarding the valuation of our current assessment.
And I mean as spoke, thanks for your explanation. I use the word settlement. We're not at that point.
We are not.
Okay, so forgive me.
Yeah, we're actually gearing up for a whole litigation.
Exactly. So forgive me for misstating that. Resolution fifty-eight ties in with what Solicitor Madore just talked about, the Elwood City Hospital property at seven twenty-four Purging Street in the borough of Elwood City. The resolution notes that the three taxing bodies will work together on this, Elwood Area School District, the Borough of Elwood City, and the county.
Correct.
Correct. And you're proposing the use of San Martino Scout and Lo Presti as the company with whom we would enter into a letter of engagement for this purpose.
It's a firm we've used in the past, we're comfortable with.
Before we move on to Lightner Green, let's start with fifty-eight, which is the proposal for the property in the borough of Elwood City. Mr. Sanada, any questions for either JR or Solicitor Madore?
No.
Dan?
No.
I take it, gentlemen, you're comfortable with the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion for resolution fifty-eight, please?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second. Thank you. There are no other questions. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rovler?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Thank you. Incidentally, the firm with whom, oh, it doesn't have their address on here. You know where San Martino?
They're out of Erie.
Erie County. Thank you very much. Resolution fifty-nine, as Mr. Madore spoke of, is the Lightner Green property, thirty-two ninety-six Mitchell Road in Nishannick Township. And this proposal would allow us, in conjunction with the Nishannick Township School District and the township of Nishannick, to enter into an agreement for appraisal, with appraisal and marketing associates of Somberry, Pennsylvania, which is out in Northumberland County. And they will work with us on this, on this matter. Counselor, anything I've overlooked?
Yeah, that particular appraisal firm, the Drusecki father and son team, they're a specialized firm. They've dealt with this type of assessment appeal in the past. So with another firm that we're comfortable with, we've used them in the past. And they're, they're the best in the state regarding this particular type of appeal, because it's a theoretical legal argument that's being made by Lightner Green. I see.
And we've noted in previous meetings, you know, we have a process. If someone wishes to appeal the assessment of their property, the first step they take is the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is a three-member board that's appointed by us. It's not us, but it's a board that's appointed by us. They hold a public meeting with the, with the appellant, the applicant. What's the right word I'm looking for?
Yeah, okay.
The applicant. In these two instances, unless I'm wrong, the Board of Assessment Appeals voted in a manner that was not satisfactory to the two applicants, which is why they're taking it to the third floor.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So now it goes in front of the courts.
Right. And at that point, it's called a D no vote, which means that you basically start all of them.
Okay. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions on this one.
No.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay. This is resolution fifty-nine pertaining to the Lightner Green property in Nishannick Township. May I have a motion for it, please?
I think we should accept.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there are no other questions for either JR or Mr. Madore, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rovler?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason, very much. I appreciate all your work and all your help. JR, likewise, we have to head off. We'll still see you every now and then, won't we?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on our agenda is resolution sixty, and this comes to us from the tax claim office. Brian Buick is our tax claim director. And Brian, it's always a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for joining us. You have some, you have a proposal regarding the credit card processing work that's done in your office. And you, this is resolution sixty. It would allow the county to enter into a contract with, how do I pronounce that? GMA?
GMA.
GMA LLC doing business as Municipal Services Bureau. But could you give us all the background, please?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Thanks for letting me attend the meeting this morning. As you know, a few months ago, we were told by our software vendor that we've used for fifteen or eighteen years that they wanted to get out of the tax claim business. We had to hire a new company, GSS. We started using that on March first. Right now, we're collecting twenty twenty-four delinquent taxes using the new software. It's a much bigger process to transition twenty years' worth of data into the new software. So we're still using the prior system from twenty-three and prior, and we're working through issues to make sure that the new system is seamless. But the bottom line is, our office, as you know, keeps meticulous records of how much money we collect delinquent property taxes for the county. All the municipalities in the county, except the city of Newcastle and most of the school districts. We take payments in guaranteed funds, meaning cash, certified check or cashier's check or money order. A few years back, the county started offering the option to our customers to pay their delinquent taxes by credit card. Last year, in twenty twenty-four, we collected one million, two hundred seventeen thousand dollars in credit card payments. There's many reasons for that. Some people call from out of state. And people, I spoke to a lady this morning from Florida. She owns property in Lawrence County, wanted to pay her taxes online. So we need to have a credit card option so people from out of town can be paid online. And also, some people come into the office, and it's more convenient for them to pay by credit card than to go get money order or cashier's check. So bottom line is, with our new software, I called our current credit card processor and said, can you take payments and credit it through our new software? And they said, no, we don't have an interface with the new software company. So we would have to write customized software. But I called our current provider, and they recommended that we find a new credit card company who has a software interface already written with GSS, our new tax claim software vendor. And so I reached out to them. They've been dealing with this company for many years. This company doing business is MS Municipal Services Bureau, so we call them MSB. They've been providing credit card payment processing for GSS and all the other counties related business. So I'm recommending that we approve an agreement with this new credit card processing company. We will phase out the old credit card company once we transition all the twenty-three and prior data to the, to the new system. So temporarily, we'll have two credit card options for the old taxes and then for the most recent year taxes. The bottom line is, though, this new company, what they do is they charge a convenience fee to the customer who wants to pay by credit card. And that's paid by the customers, and that's added on. So say you owe a thousand dollars on your delinquent taxes, you pay an extra two point four or five percent. The new company charges two point seven nine percent. But I explained to them that right now, we're in a transition period, and I got them to agree to lower their fees to two point four or five percent to match what we currently charge with our current credit card providers. Whether, people come in to pay about twenty-three and twenty-four, this way they have the same fee for all of their taxes. So they agreed to do that for the remainder of twenty-four and before the end of the year, and much sooner, hopefully, will be using the new software for everything. So the only cost to the county is a one-time expense by new credit card. I'm sure you've all paid for things with credit card. New credit cards have tap feature, they have a chip feature, and they have the magnetic strip on the back. Our equipment up at the tax claim window only has the old magnetic strip. You have to slide the card through the magnetic strip, and often it doesn't read. So we're going to buy three new pieces of equipment for our three windows where we pay payments. Customer can just tap their card or stick the chip in. It's much quicker, more secure than the old magnetic strike. And sometimes magnetic strike gets dirty or doesn't read properly. So a one-time expense for the three new pieces of equipment, which my budget can absorb, because we save money by switching to the new credit card provider. And after that, the only fee to the county to be, once a year, we have to pay for what's called a merchant ID fee. And that's ninety-nine dollars a year. Again, it's a one new expense, but because we collect, you know, it's a couple million dollars a year, but national collect a couple million dollars a year, I think it's worth it to pay ninety-nine dollars a year to be able to take credit card payments. So I'm asking for your approval for this agreement. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Brian, thank you for that very helpful and thorough explanation to us. Mr. Sanada, do you have questions for Brian?
I think Brian did a very good job of explaining it. It's generating lots of revenue for the county. If you want to get as much, I can illustrate with an Asco spot when you're talking about events coming in. So please.
Yes, people come in every day and call every day. Can I make a credit card payment? We have to explain right now, we can't for the twenty-four taxes. So we want to offer the services and.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Kennedy?
My only question, Brian, is the ninety-nine dollars, is that per machine? Or is that one, just one?
For our merchant, every company that uses a credit card has assigned a merchant ID fee. It's a one fee for our ID, which all three machines will be tapped into our new software.
Those are one. I'll have to figure that out. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Joe, anything about who you've worked with Brian on this?
No, just a wonderful job.
Great. Thank you, Joe. This is resolution sixty. Would one of you care to make a motion for its approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. There are no other questions or concerns. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rovler?
Yes.
Listen, Carrie.
Brian, thank you so much.
Commissioner Rovler, after the meeting, I will need just one more, two of you to sign this form. All this form does is allows the new company to put the money they collect for us into our OS Bank of Bankington. So.
We just do it now?
Yeah.
Two signatures.
Chris, do you mind since Dan's sitting right here?
Any two.
Yes.
Probably towards bottom where it says signature, obviously. Will you fill in the?
Yeah, I'll print your name, just sign it. David.
Three twenty-five?
Chris, we'll get you next time.
That's okay. Get this in, and we'll get the new equipments here soon. Chairman, can I have just two minutes just to update you on our judicial sales that's coming up next month? Of course, because this generates a lot of interest in the county and outside the county. As you know, my office conducts two sales a year. In this spring, it's called a judicial sale, because we petitioned the court to sell property that didn't pay their taxes from twenty twenty-two. So they've had over two years to try to get caught up. But nevertheless, that sale is scheduled for Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, so just about a month from now. And we are required by law to publish ads in two local newspapers. It'll be in today's Elwood City Ledger, and it'll be in tomorrow's Newcastle News, just in case anybody asks you. We're required by law to publish those ads. It'll list the properties that are potentially going to sell that day. And we expect a hundred or more people to register a bid on that. If anybody wants information, it's on, we've updated our page of the county website. So I just want to make you aware that that ad will be in today's Elwood City Ledger, tomorrow's Newcastle News. The sale will be upheld on April twenty-fifth. And of course, the people who own those properties still have another month. They can come in up till the day before the sale and still get caught up, save their property. But in many cases, people may have passed away or moved out of the county or abandoned the property. But these are properties that, like I said, haven't paid their property taxes since twenty twenty-two. So just wanted to update you on that. That'll be a busy month leading up to the judicial sale on April twenty-fifth.
Is this the sale that is sometimes referred to as the upset sale?
No, that's the fall. This one is the fall. So known as the free and clear sale. So all these properties are going for sale on April twenty-fifth. Minimum bid will start at five hundred dollars. But they come with no back taxes, no liens, no judgments. The owner is only responsible for the taxes going forward after this sale.
So they've gone through the.
Upset sale of the fall of twenty-four and did not sell. So that's why now they're available as a free clear sale.
And the ones that don't sell next month then go to the repository?
Right. The ones that don't sell on April twenty-fifth, the week after, once we score up and settle off of all the buyers, the remaining properties will then get added to the repository list, which, as you guys know, every month, we offer people the chance to buy those properties directly from the repository.
We appreciate that.
Just wanted to give you an update, if you have any questions on that.
Do you have any questions? Chris? That's very helpful, though. Thank you for noting it. Thanks for everything.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day, Brian.
You too.
Amy McKinney is with us. She's got a couple items for, following the jurisdiction of the planning partner, which she is the director. Resolution sixty-one, you may recall, a couple weeks ago, we opened some bids through the Controller's Office for maintenance of our county-owned parks and boat launches. And it looks as though your office is recommending that we award the bid to Beyond Corporation of Edinburg. I think that, I think they're based out in Mahoning Township. And the amount would not exceed seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. But Amy, why don't you fill us in on the details if you have some?
Nothing really too much to add. Like you said, we did the bid process like we're required to do. We have the online service we've been using. We had two bids come in. One was from the Encore, and one was from Piotz. They were pretty close in the amounts that they both provided, but the Encore was a little better. And they submitted all the required documents that needed, and they were able to meet all the requirements that we set forth in the bid documents for them to complete the maintenance of our properties that we own. in the bid documents for them to complete the maintenance of our properties that we own.
I know in recent years, we've utilized Piotz's services. Have we used Beyond before?
They, they done work for us here and there on some projects, but they haven't, um. They did bid last year on the, this job, but they went up a little bit there last year, so. But yeah, we work closely with them on other things, and they're great to work with. So, you know, those, those companies are an asset to the county, um, so, you know, we're happy to work with it either way. It just happened to be a little bit a little bit there.
That's why we have that process.
Yep.
Amy, thank you. I'm gonna see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions.
No, I think Amy's explained it all.
Thank you. Chris, Mr. Kennedy?
No, thanks.
Gentlemen, this is Resolution sixty-one that's in front of us, recommending that we enter into a contract with Beyond Corporation out of Mahoning Township for annual maintenance of our county-owned parks and boat launches. Amount want to exceed seventy thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. May I please have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Number sixty-two is a proposed resolution to allow us to enter an agreement, the county to enter into an agreement with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Quaker Falls Master Site Development Plan. That's our Quaker Falls Park out in Mahoning Township. Amy, can you fill us in on this first one?
Yeah, sure. So this is a resolution that where we are, we are required to submit with our application. We are submitting two applications to D C N R. The first one, like you mentioned, is the Quaker Falls Master Site Development Plan, which falls under the Planning Funds with the D C N R's C two P two, which is a Community Conservation Partnership Plan Program. So this will be a planning grant for the Quaker Falls Master Site Plan, things on the lower portion. We're gonna look at doing a master site plan for there to see how we can develop it, conserve it. And so we are submitting to D C N R for the funds.
Refresh my bad memory. Initially, on that parcel, we owned down to the railroad tracks. But then at some point, we secured ownership, would be north of the railroad tracks, up to the river, the Mahoning Rivers. Is that correct, is my memory correct? Okay, thank you. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has questions on this first proposal. Thank you, Mr. Sanada.
Yep.
Okay, this is Resolution sixty-two, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then Resolution sixty-three is somewhat similar from the standpoint. This resolution deals with the Stabbage Bike Trail Rehabilitation Project. The Stabbage Bike Trail is owned by the county, and it goes through both Union and Mahoning Townships. In, in your presentation, help me understand something. You're referring to it as Phase One. Now, we received an initial allocation a year or so ago. Help me understand, is, is, is what this document talks about refer to that initial allocation?
So what we, the amount that you're referring to that we received or were awarded was the L S A. And our original ask for the L S A was the entire length of the trail established in the county, um, which was like over seven hundred thousand dollars. We only received a hundred thousand dollars from D C B under the L S A program. So we had to go back to them and re-scope it, and so we had to cut it down, basically. You're looking probably a dozen mile that we're looking at here, maybe, maybe even less, I can't remember off the top of my head. So we're calling it Phase One, because we're using our L S A a hundred thousand dollars to match D C N R's grant. So we have a total of two hundred thousand dollars, which will only get us a portion. So we're going Phase One, so we're phasing it out, basically, is what we're doing. We did apply again in the fall to L S A for the, the big amount again, minus the hundred thousand they already gave us. We'll wait to, if we get some more money from them, we'll just kind of piecemeal it together, phase it out, so, that's what we're doing.
We do the initial phase. Have we identified the area of the trail that needs the attention the most, or are we just gonna start?
I think we're just gonna start.
Start at one end and work around it?
Yeah, start at Union Township, start there. We have to kind of talk a little bit about it more, but that probably makes the most sense.
Okay.
Um, the whole trail needs work, whether it's repaving, fixing some culverts, some of the bridges, working with some, putting some nice benches in and stuff. So I think ideally, we'd like to start just at the trailhead and work our way down.
Thank you for that. Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions for Amy?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Sanada.
Just Amy, I think, I think that makes sense, what you're saying, because, like I said, a lot of sharp on bike and ride the trail. It seems to be in the same type of condition through the whole trail.
Yeah.
And so it's not, it needs upgrading, it needs work done, but I can't picture any section that's really worse than the other.
Yeah, I can't either. I mean, Rebecca might be able to, you know, say that we're wrong on that, but I, she's out there more, more than anybody. You know, she drives past that way on a radar, and, you know, she's always stopping, just want to check her. And I'll both do a good job of checking on the trails, since they live up that way as well. But I think, yeah, for the most part, it is, um, you know, I, I wouldn't say there's one area that's, you know, worse than the other. Plus, we have done some work in Jono's over the years. You guys, all three of you in our previous board have been great, and, um, you know that's an asset. And when there's, when there's problems out there, we don't sit on it, you know, we do our best to act and, and take care of it as quickly as possible. And, you know, Lex says a lot about how you guys, you know, appreciate that, that asset that we have in the county, so.
You're, you're exactly right, and we have to think it is a true asset.
It is.
At, at C cap last week, at one of the conferences, we talked about, uh, we were talking about recreation trails and bikes throughout the state, so, you know, you know, that's something I think is really helpful for money from that. So I just wanted to say, yes, I agree with what you're saying. Listen, Hoover, give it that, uh, hopefully, uh, we get more money.
Hopefully, we get more non-stay money, yeah, so.
Well, we've done the second time's a charm, if not, we'll go to the middle again for the third, so. Keep up the good work. And I, I would say this, though, if you compare our section to what, once you hit Ohio, we are like night and day, and I think we can reach out to them over there, because they only have a mile or, I believe, a half.
It's not, it's not a lot. And when we first started this whole Stabbage Bike Trail, when the commissioners worked with Penn Power to get the ninety-nine yearly agreement, it was Ohio that had, there's always like Pennsylvania, you need to get your gear, you know, get your stuff in order, because Ohio's trail is great. And now, ever since we take ownership, lease ownership of it, I guess, you know, I'm wondering, so. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Could I have a motion for Resolution sixty-three?
I'll make that motion. Motion. I'll second.
If there are no other questions or concerns, we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Gentlemen, toward the end of our agenda, we have a proposed ordinance.
I'm fine sticking around, I, I know it's like an amendment, you probably, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, all right, we're gonna be long-term online. Long-term online.
No, no, it's fine.
Thank you. Well, uh, public safety, and, uh, Mr. Hoover, uh, Mr. Hoover, thank you for your patience today. We have a proposed resolution from your department. This is number sixty-four, and would allow the county to enter into a contract with Schneider Electric, Gemco Remmark Sales. And can you give us a little background on to, as to what they're offered, what they're offering to us?
Uh, this is to renew our contract with Gemco, formerly Schneider Electric, for support and maintenance on our U P S system, or on our internal power supply. And this contract will provide factory-direct technical support, twenty-four seven, onsite emergency service within a four-hour window, instead of next day or when they were to get around to it. So they guarantee we'll be there within, you know, four hours for emergency response. Also provides preventative maintenance on the unit itself, plus the batteries, and it covers parts and labor, everything except the batteries.
Oh, totally. I'm the layman here. We're talking about the system will kick in in the event of, let's say, a power outage?
Yes, it's, it's our first line of defense in case of a power outage.
Okay.
So it will keep all the critical infrastructure and components running seamlessly without any interruption until the generator actually receives a signal to turn on, it does its own maintenance check, and then we'll be on full generator power. This keeps everything alive without a glitch until that.
Is it safe to call it a pre-generator generator?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's always running in the background, we're not using it all the time. It's always running, and it's, it's kind of waiting.
Understood.
It, it's waiting to see that power failure, and then it automatically seamlessly transitions to the U P S supply, and then it waits until the generator's online, and then the generator kicks over.
Thank you for that. I, I, if I can understand that, these guys are way ahead of us, way ahead of us as well, but certainly makes sense to me. So thank you for your understandable explanation. I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Sanada. All righty. This will allow us to enter into this contract. Do you know off the top of your head the length of the contract?
Uh, one year.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I, I just need to know that. May I have a motion for Resolution sixty-four?
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for Mr. Hoover? Hearing number, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You two have a safe trip back.
Thank you, both.
Take care.
This Resolution number sixty-five is a mandatory in nature. If you might recall, back on January twenty-eighth, the board entered into an agreement, wow, I strike that. The board approved an allocation to Dawn Enterprises in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Fund, the dollars which are collected in the Register and Recorder's Office. This was for them to continue their mortgage assistance program. Amy, I know you're very familiar with this, so if I misspeak, you know, correct me. What we're doing here as far as amending that original resolution is we're changing the name of the recipient. The recipient will no longer be Dawn Enterprises, it will instead be Disabilities Options Network. And what we will do going forward, rather than make the total allocation upfront at first, these will be done on an ongoing basis. So each time Disability Options Network enters into an agreement with an applicant that is approved by them, the county will then produce two separate checks. One check, which will cover the administrative costs, will go to Disability Options Network. And the second check will be made out to the settlement company of the applicant. And this will be done on a case-by-case basis until we hit the forty thousand dollar threshold. Joe and Amy, you've both been in the discussions, did I miss anything?
Yeah.
I think you explained it.
Okay, but, and then let me pose the same question to, uh, Mr. Kennedy, and see if you have other comments.
No, I think we, yeah, we've got straight.
Thank you. And, and we, we did this in conjunction with a, a, a length, fairly lengthy discussion with our solicitor as well. Mr. Sanada?
I think we can solve the issue.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is Resolution sixty-five again, it amends Resolution twenty of two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution sixty-six involves our Community Development Block Grant Fund. This is a budget amendment that will increase the line item known as the C D B G Revenue, C D B G Fund Account by the dollar amount of a hundred and seven thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And then we will earmark it towards the C D B G C Y S Transportation Expense Account. This falls under your?
Yeah, so it's, it's C D B G, it's our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three county program. One of the, um, items we allocated funds towards was the C Y S Public Service. Been working with Lawrence County Community Action Partnership. It's basically helping, you know, fund some of the C Y S work, that they don't have to use their money. They'll transport foster children, and Lawrence County Community Action Partnership is doing it, so. And so now, they're ready to go. So I don't, we don't budget for it unless, you know, we, we're ready to, once we get our contract, then we have to set it up in the system, and we have to fund it, and we need, I need the go-ahead from Jen that they're, they're ready to run the program. So that's why it wasn't budgeted for.
No, and, and your explanation helps remind me, because, because I was here in two thousand and twenty-three, I think it's hopefully helpful to my, my two colleagues, because of course, they started in two thousand and twenty-four. So with that all being said, Chris, do you have questions on this for Amy? Dan, anything for Amy? Okay. And of course, you're obviously recommending it.
Yeah, and I'll be, your, your second meeting in April, April eighth, I'll be coming with an agreement between the county and L T A to administer the program, so.
You're comfortable with all this? Okay, great, thanks again, Amy. This is Resolution sixty-six. Assuming Chris and Dan have no other questions, we'll take a motion, please.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next Resolution, number sixty-seven, is a two thousand dollar transfer request. The department is the commissioners, but it affects the voters' office, if I'm reading this correctly. But it's a two thousand dollar transfer from the commissioners' contingency into the voters' land and building line item for storage invoices at the Wallop Mines?
Yes, it's not eligible under the election of parent, which previously, I believe, it would be.
Interesting, okay, that's fine, we'll, we'll adapt. Mr. Sanada, questions?
No.
Mr. Kennedy? Hey, thank you. This is Resolution sixty-seven, could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This next transfer, it's, it's a, it's a fairly sizable transfer, but it's not one that's catching us off-guard. These two items have been in the works, for lack of a better term. The money that we're transferring will amount to three hundred and forty thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The line item that it will come from is the Capital Projects Contingency Line Item. Both of these transfers, or the transfers involve the jail. Of the total that I just read, two hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars will go towards the jail's major equipment line item for the, I assumed it is upgrade, the right word for the camera system?
Upgraded camera system. It was, uh, required years ago, they just finished the work, it was about a three or four-year project.
And then eighty thousand dollars, we had to make some adjustments and some upgrades to the fire alarm system, right?
That's correct.
Now, I want to start with Mr. Sanada, since he chairs the prison board, and see if he has any questions or concerns.
No, I think it makes sense, I said, I was disgusted. It's something that has to be done, there's no options on it.
One of the catches with the fire system, it should be noted, is, is, uh, it becomes a restriction, and you're unable to utilize the elevator systems, you don't have the proper fire line. So, uh, that was really called to our attention by, when we were doing our hand inspections.
Thank you for being on top of that, and I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions. Nothing, okay, thank you. This is Resolution sixty-eight, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have three administrative transfers. Can I read them into the record, and we can take one vote on all three?
Yep.
And please stop if you have questions. The first two come from the District Attorney's Office. The first one, they're asking for a thirty-seven hundred dollar transfer from their contingency account into their telephone account, stating that the R N, R N S requires additional phone lines, and monies are needed to cover their cost. The second transfer request from the District Attorney's Office is asking for a two hundred and seventy-six dollar transfer from their contingency into their subscriptions line item. And then the Domestic Relations Office is asking for a four thousand dollar transfer from their contingency into their office minor. Thought the explanation was interesting. Needed to replace twenty-three-year-old state printers, as they are at the end of their life, lives, and the state no longer provides printers. Direct Image, the company that they'll be dealing with, does have printers in compliance with I R S Publication one zero seven. Those are the three transfer requests. Dan, do you have questions or concerns?
None at all.
Thank you, Chris?
A lot of questions. The printer lasted twenty-three years. Why, what brand was it?
Well, the state had it required and, and paid for the printers in the past. They discontinued that practice. And probably because across the state, their printers were twenty-three-years-old, they were a deal.
Inked the printers out.
That's, that's a long life for a printer.
That's a good printer.
Yeah, that's, that one, I think what I've noticed, but ink, I don't know, the prayer's not the cost, the ink is just. Shot up, I had to buy some ink for my printer at home.
Yeah.
The ink shot up substantially, the cost is, it just blew on, so, that's twenty-three years.
That is something.
Gentlemen, you've heard the three transfer requests. If you have no other questions, may I have a motion to approve all three of them?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you, both. Vanessa, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item that we're going to address is the introduction of Proposed Ordinance number one of two thousand and twenty-five. This ordinance pursuant to Act forty-eight, Pennsylvania Act forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four, would establish a county demolition and rehabilitation fund. It would impose a fee to be collected by the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau from purchasers at sales under the real estate tax sale law, and by the Lawrence County Sheriff from judicial sales, which are also known as sheriff's sales, in mortgage foreclosure actions. The ordinance is broken down into eight sections, short title, definitions, Establishment of the Lawrence County Demolition and Rehabilitation Fund, directives, administration of the fund, form and method of notice to affected agencies, separability, repealer, and effective date. A complete copy of the proposed ordinance is available at the Lawrence County Government Center and the Commissioner's Office, the County Law Library, as well as the county's Department of Planning and Community Development. This proposed ordinance is being advertised as required by Act, uh, County Act of August ninth, nineteen fifty-five. Any comments regarding this proposed ordinance will be sent to the Lawrence County Commissioner Chair at the Government Center, four three oh Court Street, Newcastle, P A, one six one oh one, prior to April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, when final passage is anticipated. We introduced an ordinance, it remains on the table for, I believe, two meetings. So we will talk about this again next week as well, on April one. And then the expectation is that on April eighth, we will vote for this. This is something that the legislature has allowed counties to implement, and it's been recommended to us, I believe, through the, uh, both Planning Office, and is it safe to say the Redevelopment Authority?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Let me, let me turn it over to Amy, if she would like to offer. Oh, and then I, there is a copy of the ordinance that's, that's attached. It's a free-page document. Uh, Amy, would you like to fill us in, please?
Sure, let me see, this, this just came, uh, was introduced last year, Act forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four. To the, the best of my knowledge, only one county, um, approved, adopted the ordinance in October of last year. I think it was Clinton County. Only because a, a lot of counties didn't really know about it. We didn't find out about it until late in the fall of last year, and a lot of my counterparts were in the same, uh, same vote. Moving forward, Westmoreland County just approved, adopted it last, I think it was two weeks. Um, moving forward, Westmoreland County just approved, adopted it last, I think it was two weeks ago. A number of Lancaster counties are ready to do theirs as well. So a lot of the counties are starting to um, view this. Um, the next thing about the act, this act, is that we can use the funds for um, for light removal demolition, but also re- rehabilitation. Um, we have a fund right now that's called Act one sixty-two that could only be used towards um, demolition. Same thing with our um, Affordable Housing Act. You know, we can only use that towards, you know, housing rehab or, you know, um, moving toward with affordable housing in the county. So this gives us a little bit of wiggle room where we can do both. Um, we're, we all, we are also diving into the option that we can create like a revolving loan program as long as it meets the requirements of the act. Um, it would allow us to, the the county to collect a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars from the sheriff's office and from the tax claim office. Um, I have spoken with Brian Bjork, our tax claim director, and I've also talked with sheriff, our sheriff as well, to make sure that they were on board with it and they one hundred percent supported the effort and would do whatever the county commissioners decided they wanted to do, so that's where we're at. Um, everything in here is set in the um, ordinance. Uh, Jason and I have looked at it. Jason has approved it. Um, it will be advertised this Thursday. That was sent to the Newcastle days last week.
Thank you for that information. That's very helpful. Uh, by any chance, uh, has has Attorney Long been made aware of this?
Yeah, oh yeah, we we've talked about this multiple times. Um, Dan, you've been in, you've been at the redevelopment authority meeting. We we talked about it, but they don't think it's a great idea. It'll it'll help us. You know, we are the administrators of the county uh, light removal program, which is helping rehab, flight, and an archeside program. So this will definitely help us continue doing this program along with the other funds we get from there as well, so.
Well, good. So you you've got buy-in from the Redevelopment Authority and the knowledge on the part of the two solicitors.
Yes.
Mr. Bedore and Attorney Law. And I appreciate that you've spoken with both Mr. Bjork and Sheriff Valera. Uh, by any chance, is this something that if you haven't done so, you both serve on for Lawrence Board? I assume they'd like to know about it. Maybe they're already aware of it.
Ben knows about it, yeah.
Ben knows about it. Oh, Mr. Bush knows about it, okay.
Ben knows about it, yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions or comments?
No, I'll have one comment. Um, this thing would take a five-hour session, I believe.
It says in here it's effective not less than ninety days after the effective date of this ordinance.
So that the tax sale in April would not fall under this one?
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate you're asking that. It's worth noting. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Sorry. Mr. Sanada?
No, this this will help. Like, yeah.
What we have to do today is introduce it and then table it. And as we noted, it has to stay on the table for uh, next week's meeting, and then it can be considered for a vote on April eighth. So that being said, could I have a motion for us to introduce and then table Proposed Ordinance Number One of twenty twenty-five?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And thank you, gentlemen. Any other final questions? Again, we're simply introducing and tabling. We're not voting on it today. If there are no other questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rovler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Amy, thank you. We uh, cut into a lot of your time here this morning.
Really, but we'll be here on the eighth.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. And I think you you shared with us that uh, in April, there will be a county planning.
Yes. April ninth, no, April ninth, yeah.
The second Wednesday of our month.
Almost April ninth.
Noon at the Moko House in the borough of Bessinger.
Yes.
Great, we'll all try to make it. In fact, uh, the only other announcement I'll make is that next week, the commissioners will meet here at nine AM. I want to emphasize, next week's meeting starts at nine AM rather than ten AM, and we will have a legal ad, note that. Uh, closing, oh, public comment, uh, Amy is our public.
Anything, Amy?
No, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. So Mr. Kennedy. Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Sanada?
No.
Thank you. Anything from Vanessa or Joe?
No.
Alrighty, well, thank you, everybody. I know we had a long day today and I appreciate your patience. There being no other business to be brought before this board, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the same time. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You want me to come up to you?
Yeah.
Let me use the restroom.
If you don't, if you have time.
Okay. We can win something, Zach, okay?
John's gonna meet with us at twelve or what happened?
He's up there now?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he should be up there right now.